I'd like to call the meeting of July 22nd to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bowles?
Here.
Ms. Kraut?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Thede?
Here.
Ms. Beard?
Present.
Mr. McLaughlin. Danielle Fundenberg here.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody is wishing to address the board tonight, there's sheets, I believe, on the back table that we asked you to fill out, and please get them up to the front here for when we get to the comment portion of the meeting. The next item on our agenda is election of vice president. Due to the resignation of President McLaughlin, I move up to being vice president. I assume the position of president due to our bylaws, and we need to fill the position of vice president. So I'm opening the floor to nominations.
Madam Chair, I nominate Danielle Fundenberg.
There's a nomination on the floor for Danielle Fundenberg. Anybody else?
Support it.
Motion made by Mrs. Buckley to nominate Danielle Fundenberg for vice president, seconded by Mr. Thede. Does this a roll call vote? Okay.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Ms. Beard?
Yes.
Ms. Fundenberg votes yes.
Motion carries. Mrs. Fundenberg is now our new vice president.
Do we have to change our other officers as well, if we do double duty?
Yeah, because we'll need it. Because of the opening of secretary, we'll need a secretary now. So I now open the floor for any nominations for secretary.
I can go back to secretary if you need to. I'm treasurer right now. Whatever the board needs, whatever. You want to do it?
I nominate Cheryl Buckley.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, there's a nomination of Cheryl Buckley for secretary by Mrs. Kraut, seconded by Mr. Thede. Roll call vote, please.
I'm not taking it yet, are you?
No.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Ms. Beard?
Yes.
Ms. Fundenberg votes yes.
And that would make Mr. Thede then will stay as our treasurer? The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Due to our board vacancies, that's why you guys received an amended agenda tonight, and we had to get those vacancies cleared up and discuss them. And we also needed to get updates on some pending information and stuff that we have that's happened. So on the consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, and we become the first item of business under the report of the superintendent portion of the agenda. Item A, approval: to approve the minutes of the Board of Education of the regular meeting of June 2nd, 2013; study session of June 19th, 2013; regular meeting of June 24th, 2013; and statutory and regular meeting of July 8th, 2013. B, approval: to approve the personnel actions as submitted by Rebecca Peck, Director of Human Resources; retirements, custodian A; resignations, CHS counselor and high school math teacher. C, approval: to approve the bills for payment as submitted by Sherry Propozzaglu, Director of Business and Operations, in the amount of $2,266,078.71. I need a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Motion made by Ms. Buckley, seconded by Ms. Kraut. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed seven, six, zero. The next item on the agenda is board position vacancy. And I'm not sure, did everybody get this in their... Or it might have been sitting in your place.
I have it.
Our bylaws. Considering board position vacancies.
Okay.
We have, the bylaw reads that a board member's vacancy must be filled within 30 days from the effective date of a resignation, except a vacancy occurring by a recall election which causes the vacancy to exist. The vacancy shall be filled with a legally qualified person who is appointed by a majority vote of the remaining members of the board at a regular or special meeting of the board. Persons appointed to fill a vacancy shall file acceptance of the office, including an affidavit of eligibility, with the school district election coordinator, and shall take the oath of office prescribed at law. The appointee shall hold this office from the time of their appointment until, I believe it's till the end of that appointee's, that position that they're filling's term. Right. If wishing to remain on the board for longer than that date, then the appointee must stand for election in the next annual school election. Resignations are effective without acceptance or approval by the board. When a vacancy on the board occurs, the board, in filling the vacancies, so use the following procedure. And tonight, I guess, is what we would consider, the board president, through public announcement and the news media, which I believe we're going to try to get something in the little paper, shall make known the vacancy has occurred, and those persons interested in being considered for the appointment should notify the secretary of the board by the deadline established by the board. The board shall establish the criteria used in making the appointment. The full board or a committee appointed by the board shall review and screen applications to determine which candidates should be further considered for appointment. The full board will conduct candidate screening in public session unless the candidate requests confidentiality as provided in state law. Those candidates screened for further consideration shall be interviewed by the board in public session, and the board, by roll call vote of a majority of those elected, appointed, and serving, shall determine which candidate will be appointed to fill the vacancy.
Madam Chair, what's our dates that we have to have it filled by? Because the resignation was effective what day?
It was effective on... The 19th.
The 19th.
So 30 days from the 19th. When that vacancy has to be filled.
19th August.
Okay.
18th August.
18th. So we have to establish a timeline when applications have to be in, and then we have to set up the interviews?
Right. So then I would think that August 16th would be the last day, because they have to be appointed by, what, the 19th or the 16th? Because the 18th falls on a Sunday.
Yeah, we probably need to, well, we got to do the interviews, so we need to maybe do it before that, so we get time to get the interviews in.
All right.
They're all done in the same night, right?
That's one.
It depends on how many we have.
Yeah.
Well, because, okay, the 12th and the 26th are our regular board meetings.
Right.
So it almost needs to be either, it needs to be done by the 12th.
What day? The 12th would be the deadline for?
Applicants, you're saying?
No.
You mean to have it done by that?
It has to be 30 days from, from the resignation.
Which is the 19th.
Yeah, it's got to be filled within 30 days.
Yeah, so then we would have to be voting.
On the 12th, unless we have a special meeting.
Yeah, unless we have a special meeting.
We should schedule Sandy to meet.
So we give what?
Well, I won't be here until 12.
Sandy won't be here until 12. So maybe we can do...
No, I would, I'll be back any time. Well, okay, the 12th is when we would take the vote, but the, are we doing the interviews all in the same day? Are we talking about the whole process in the same timeframe, or are we talking about spacing it out?
I don't think we should do the interview.
It depends on how many we get, too. So. I would say we should be able to do it all in one night.
Okay.
You think? So then that would be...
They did, I was appointed.
Yeah, we did them all in one night before, but it depends on how many we get. If you only get...
So you want to do it a week at the 12th?
Right, so you might as well make time, just in case you get more than enough.
Right.
So you have it already planned out. We won't have to come back to the table again.
So let's have them, have them in by...
About the 12th, and do the interviews on 13th or 14th.
We can do that. Well, we've got, we have to be in place by the 19th, right?
Yep.
So what about if we have them in by the, end of business on the 9th? Wouldn't that give them enough time?
Yeah. End of business on the 9th to have all the applications in?
Okay.
Give people enough time, right?
Okay, so all applications should be in by August 9th? All applications for the position, board position vacancy, must be in by August 9th.
We'll go over it again, Chuck, once we get everything firmed up.
We'll, we'll go over it. We're just trying to figure it all out. I have a wrench. It needs to be August 8th, because the 9th, we're on summer hours.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So it will be there.
Okay. So, yeah, that's fair, because this is today, that's planned time.
And then what, and then the days for interviews would be in what days?
It just would be the...
We got a meeting on the 12th, right?
Yes.
So can we do it like 13th, 14th?
And how many you have?
Just got aside the 13th, 14th.
Okay, so days of interviews would be August 13th and August 14th. Yeah.
Can we do it on the 13th for sure?
August 13th and 14th if needed?
What time on the 13th?
6:00 PM, is, that's what we've done in the past, is normal, you know, usually our regular board meeting time.
Let's pull it up.
Okay.
Let's push it back, push it up.
No, this is, I'll fix it. I get it fixed.
Okay. So 13th, 14th will be in there.
Right.
Then we'll vote on the 19th.
Right.
We got to make sure that, so the 19th, we'll meet our deadline.
So we got a board meeting on the 19th?
Right.
At 6 o'clock?
That's our regular meeting.
That's our regular meeting.
August 19th would?
Yeah, I thought it was the 26th.
Right, the 19th is just the deadline. They have to be in place.
Yeah, the 19th is the deadline, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 12th and 26th.
My calendar looked like the 29th, so actually we need to have a meeting on the 19th.
Right. Vote on August 19th?
Yep.
Okay. Special meeting, 6:00 PM?
Yep.
Okay.
Tracy might have to go over it for the...
Yep. Okay, so we're going to do, all applications due by August 8th, at the end of the business day, on the 8th.
What time is end of business, so leave it clear?
Was it 4:00 PM is the end of business day, because of summer hours? 5:00 PM? August 13th and 14th, 6:00 PM, will be the days that we'll do interviews. 14th will be as needed, if needed. Then we will have a special meeting on August 19th at 6:00 PM for the board to vote, to fill the vacancy. And the next item on our agenda then is report of the superintendent, and at this point in the meeting, I'll turn it over to Dr. Daniels.
The first thing on our agenda, and we're bringing back to the board, to vote the... I'm sorry.
Yeah, microphone.
We're bringing back before the board, the membership for ADD, also known as NCA, for the accreditation. It is our recommendation that we, we take this membership.
Did we find out if there are other schools in the neighborhood that don't have the accreditation that are sending their kids to getting scholarships and going to college without it?
Did not find any that were not. They are some, there are some schools who have, or districts who have applied, who have not yet received their accreditation, but for those in our immediate area, those schools are accredited, especially the high school.
I guess now, with everyone being able to choose to do it online, or however, as long as you pass the ACT and SAT, I'm just wondering if it's a necessity to buy the certification?
Well, I just, I went and I did some research. I went to Eastern Michigan University, I went to Wayne County Community College District, I went to Washington Our Community College, I went to, let's see, which is this one? Michigan State University, I went to the University of Michigan, and I think that's all of them that I went to. And I looked at what was their admission process, and I just compared all of them. I set them all across and compared them, and what I found is predominantly what Ms. Kraut is saying, about the SAT, the ACT, a certain grade point average is what I mostly found. For the Wayne County Community County District, they have on here, let me see, applicants must be 18 years of age or older, or must have completed high school or hold a general education certi, certificate, is what they have listed down here. Let's see, what else they got here? They also had down here where you had to take like a assessment testing, and from what I got from the assessment testing, it's just aware of them being able, so if you don't, if you have like a GED, it's just a way of them being able to assess where you are, far as your math and reading skills, and so they can properly place you. But for the most part, that's what I saw for the same, and they, and same thing for, what is this? Wash, is this Washington Our Community College? Same thing they had here, it's called the COMPIS test, and it's the same thing. I even called one, and I asked them, okay, about the accreditation from the high schools, and they said, no, they don't look at that particularly, that's only on a college level, like if there's a student that's transferring from one college to another college, to make sure that the college that they're at is accredited before they accept their credits. So I just want to let you know that I did check it and asked them about it, and the ones that I checked online in regards to their admission requirements had in nothing about a specific, I don't want to call it a stamp, y'all know I don't want to call it a stamp, but seal. Didn't have anything on there.
I guess my question would be, the schools, districts that are around us, those are accredited schools, right?
Yeah, for the most part, they are.
And there's, there's some certain criteria to be accredited, because I know it's an extensive process to make sure that we're accredited, that we're meeting all the requirements, everything's been done.
Yes.
We're meeting all the bullet points and all the targets we need to meet.
Yes.
So if I was a parent, my, if I was a parent, my child, I would want to send my child to a school that was accredited rather than not be accredited. That's, that would be my personal opinion. But, I mean, because there are certain criteria we have to meet to get this. This is just not a stamp that you can easily get. It's, it takes a lot of work to be accredited. For a school improvement plan, there are all kinds of things that go into being accredited. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Do we know what that requirement is still yet? What, what, what is the requirement that we have to go through to be accredited? Because my concept is if the University of Michigan, the Michigan State University, Eastern Michigan University, and all these other universities are not accepting, are not saying that's part of something that we need, and we're sitting here right now looking at a deficit elimination plan, and we're saying, we're trying to look at what it is that we need to stay above water, then we might need to put that on the back burner, not necessarily saying that's not something we can look at at a later date, but as of right now, our main objective is saving money to keep us above water. So I would think that, me personally, as long as it's not affecting the kids' educational as in, as in them being able to enter and enroll into a particular college, that might be something we can work on a later day, a later date. I know you brought up Belleville, but do, is Belleville going through what we're going through right now? Do anybody know that?
And if we have to start...
Okay, so...
If we, if we don't, we'll be starting over, you know, from the beginning. You know, the initial application process. And it will also mean, even with some of our reporting, all of our schools are, and the district are going to have to shift over to a different kind of reporting, as opposed to NCA schools.
Is any of our grant money attached to this accreditation?
Not right now, no.
And is there, are there any state requirements that's far as being accredited? Because I know, like, our school improvement plan and that kind of thing, well, I want to say that there was something that, that required us to be accredited, and I can't remember exactly what that was that required an accreditation. It was part of, I don't know if it was part of the best practices, or, but it was, it was something that was attaching that we needed in order to have accreditation for. I can't remember what it is offhand, it kind of escapes me. You know, I'm also wondering, you know, we, she checked in-state, what does, are there any out-of-state requirements? But I'm ready to take my vote, so I'm good.
I think, too, what I looked at was... I'm sorry, I had a senior moment, but, but I know that, um... I have to review what Danielle said, because it triggered something, and now it's gone. I know, but I need it now.
Funny, I want it now.
Best practices, maybe? No.
Well, we can put it, we can put up vote, and then you can think about it, because it's got to be on the floor anyway.
Does that go out on our media flyer, for accredited schools?
Yes.
Okay. Because, I mean, I wouldn't, that would maybe bring out-of-town people into us.
Yeah, but it is.
Okay.
I guess I look at it this way. They're going to look at our MEAT scores, they're going to look at, I mean, we're doing AYP, but are we at the state level? No, we're below that. We're, we're getting accredited, but we're still not, have not gotten our scores up where they should be. So, um, what do they call that, when they do the testing, the state testing, and they say, here, reading, you should be at this level, and you're at this level?
To me?
Me? Maybe it's to me. So I guess, you know, I would think that part of the accreditation should be acquired, should be based on student achievement, and so that's why I wonder, you know, yeah, when you're doing a great job, but...
I think that, to me, that's what the accreditation does, is it sets certain standards that, or in guidelines that we need to follow in order to get the, the student achievement pieces in place, so, you know.
But don't you think it sends a mixed message? I mean, you have this stamp, I keep saying stamp, y'all, I'm sorry, it's not a stamp.
We know what you're talking about.
Okay? But you have this seal, and the seal say, in so many words, excellence, 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 but then when the parents look up the school district and they look at the ranking of the school, like Ms. Kraut says, is below level, so isn't that kind of contradicting? Aren't we sending out a mixed message? I mean, I just, it is what it is. I think if, whatever we are, we need to make sure that it's portrayed across as being as truthful as possible, as what it is. And I don't want to lead any citizen down the wrong, you know, wrong passage by making them think, okay, well, you, you got this seal, well, then that's going to question them, well, what does this seal really mean? You said it, that's what it says, excellence, but this is not, when I look at where we're ranked at in regards to the, the different school districts around us, it says something different, so.
Is there a motion on the table?
No, there's no motion on the table, so.
Okay. I can move that, the important. You can shed, if you could shed some light, that would be nice.
Shed some light.
Well, that makes it, that makes it...
That's kind of what I was...
We're getting something for a dollar then, other than just...
When she applies for grants, for teacher grants, that was the criteria, had, you had to be accredited.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Ms. McGlynn. What was stated, because we're, she didn't have the microphone, is that some of the grants that the teachers do apply for, do, they need to have that in place. They ask whether or not you're NCA accredited.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion and...
Well, do you have any information on that, so we can read back up on that? Because I like to see that myself. Is there anything you can give us, any kind of documentation that we can have to research a little further, so that we can get a exact, a definite answer in regards to that, as in, you know, having it in paper form? I would like to do some research on that and find that information and compare it to what I'm finding out, because when I called the schools, and when I called the schools and looked it up, that's not what I was told, in regards to the students. What you're talking about is in regards to the teachers, so I would like to be able to look that up.
No, I think what she's saying, not with the teachers, when teacher applies for a grant, it's not for the teachers per se, it's for the students.
But it's for the grant.
It's for the students, it's a grant for the students.
Okay.
But you have to be accredited in order to get that grant for the students, but it's the teachers that are applying for the grants.
Well, where can we find information on that?
Maybe we can ask the administration. They're applying for, so.
Is that what we want to bring up?
Can, yeah, could we, could you maybe get some information for us, if possible? Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and join the ADD for the 213, 2013, 2014 school year at a cost of $4,550.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Fundenberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Nay.
Motion passes 5-1.
Okay, the next on the agenda, we, I'd like for discussion and information, these packets, and you're not going to be voting on this tonight, this is, this is information. Is that enough? You know, we continually look to try to provide services for our, our community, and one of those services is, you know, virtual learning. We do have an agreement with, is it Oakland currently, for K-8, and we were, we were now looking at providing that service for grades nine through, through 12, through JST Incorporated. And I see Mr. Perry, one of the representatives, is, is here, and would you like to just come up for a moment and, and give us a quick, two-minute overview of the board, the, um...
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is it on? I don't know if it's on.
It's a couple of buttons.
Like the top button. And you can pull it out of there if you like.
Yeah, so you can get low, breathe them on.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Perry, and I represent JST, Job Skill Technology, based out of Auburn Hills. And we are responsible for providing virtual courses and classrooms throughout the state of Michigan. I've been in the educational business as a teacher, and for the past eighteen years, as a sales rep, director of business of sales for various companies throughout the Detroit metropolitan area. The focus with the VSP programs is to bring funding into the school district. There are a lot of people out there, a lot of, we call this brick and mortar, but outside of brick and mortar, there are a number of students who are not attending school, for whatever reason. And what we do, we have a way of attracting those students. How do we do it? We have marketing programs, recruitment programs. We go out into the community and recruit and advertise. We spend thousands of dollars on advertising. This costs your district nothing. We do all the work. I guess that's it in a nutshell, in a nutshell. We're responsible for the recruit, recruitment efforts. And, and one thing I enjoy about the, the online program is that it's not strictly online courses. We have what we call a balanced literacy approach, where we have online courses, and we have actual applications, books, and materials that we send home to the school, to the, to the students. So instead of boring you to death with one hundred percent online application, which is not work, we provide you what we call a balanced literacy approach. Fifty-fifty, fifty percent online and fifty percent actual books and, and materials that the kids can touch and feel. So that's, in a nutshell, what we're responsible for. Again, the key is, I, to bring in additional revenue to the school district. As you know, each child is worth an FTE, worth a dollar amount. So we try to bring in additional funding to the school districts. We have over forty-seven VSP programs throughout the state of Michigan, all over the Michigan. We are the largest provider, largest provider of online application in the state of Michigan. Keep in mind, the name of the company is JST, Job Skill Technology. We've been around for twenty-four years, and the same person we began with twenty-four years ago is still our partner today. So that gives us just a brief synopsis, a brief overview of what we do. The board members, you have packets there. The same courses that are taught in high school or in your brick and mortar are the same courses are taught at home. In terms of, of, of computers, we provide computers for the students. No cost to you. The government, the state of Michigan.
We have a fifty percent functional literacy for the kids graduating from high school in the city of Detroit, Wayne County. Kids go, and my grandmother taught school in Detroit Public Schools forty-eight and a half years.
Right.
Kids today, they can't learn from their teachers. They won't learn from their teachers.
Absolutely.
You think they're going to sit at home on the computer studying and look? Now they're going to be out running the streets like they do today.
This is an option. We do have what we call mentors that will mentor the students. The students are responsible. They must log in. They're responsible.
If they don't?
We have.
The program that charges more on our taxes.
We have a number of people in our office that constantly call students.
They got two and officers, and two and officers can't drive them to school. So you're people calling them on the phone saying, hey, honey, are you going to school today? Or get on the computer. Phones were ringing, ringing, always. That's why from the school and on.
And one of the things, one.
Or how do you know they're actually doing the work? Do they have to go in at some point?
Absolutely. They have to go in, we have mentors who call each person that we enroll. They have to check in with us on a weekly basis.
Okay, so they take a placement test or something after they've done the course, so you know they've done the course. They have to go to class, and somebody is going to watch them take a test?
In terms of testing, they have to come, if there's a state test or the high school testing, for example, they have to come here physically to take the exam.
But, and, and remember, this program is not necessarily for everyone.
Absolutely.
But we, but we do, what we're trying to do is provide the opportunity for those persons who have opted to homeschool their students.
Absolutely.
And that's not everyone. But for those who have, what we'd like to do in a similar way that we've done, you know, provide that service K eight, is to now provide the service nine twelve. And we felt that with this, what this company was bringing was, many of the costs that were ours are no longer ours. They assume those costs. And in addition to that, if, if we find that a student is not, you know, keeping up and not making it, and is not going to stay with the program, we're not held for the whole year, you know, if they need to opt out at the end of the semester. Our obligation will end at the end of that semester, as opposed to the whole year.
Are we going to have an opportunity to have, like, a study session on this, or are we just kind of, you know, just kind of talking about it now, as far as, you know, the questions that we would have for Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Additional questions? So like, for instance, what will the, the model look like? I had, I heard a couple of comments on who would be supervising the students. So then, does Romulus have the flexibility to create what that, that supervision piece is going to look like? Or does that fall under JST's jurisdiction as far as how that is, is set up? How, I heard somebody else say, well, how do we know it's the student that is actually doing the work? So then, you know, are there certain password codes that, that they need to input? And so, I guess we just would need to know, I would like to know, what, you know, how are we going to, you know, put it in place? What's, what is it going to look like? And what types of control as a district do we have over that particular student's performance?
Well, most of the control is, is our responsibility.
Okay.
We have an office in Auburn Hills, and they manage our program. They provide the services, the online instruction, to the students.
Okay.
The only requirement that I foresee is that we have to have a mentor, someone who's able, someone who's working in the district, who's able to contact the students on an ongoing basis, at least once or twice a month, to see, once or twice a week, to see how they're doing.
Okay.
Okay?
Excuse me, Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
So you said we are doing this K through eight currently?
We're already doing a K through eight.
And we're.
Yes.
What, what is the model set up for, for the K through eight on monitoring?
Do you know what the monitoring for the K through eight is?
What does a monitoring piece look like, K through eight?
Can we just have a study session?
Yeah, we need, we need to look at it.
We need to discuss.
We need more time at this.
Yeah.
Oakland ISD is the key.
We just need to have.
Yeah, Oakland ISD handles all of those pieces.
Okay.
And I know they're the ones who set up testing. They're the ones who, you know, do that. And we just, that, we're, we're providing with, with the, the names of the students.
Okay.
You know, and, and capturing that. But what other questions?
Well, that was pretty much, you know, what types of flexibility we had as a district if we decided to do the K, the nine through twelve.
Is that how the district gets the FTE? They have to be a resident attached to somehow our district to, for us to capture that FTE? I mean, you couldn't live in Taylor.
Yes, you can.
But, so how does Romulus get the FTE, I guess? If they don't, you know, I'm saying, if you're doing that online from home, how does Romulus capture that FTE money if it's a student that lived in Garden City? I mean, would, I'm thinking, would you have to be in Romulus or attached around the school? I mean, when you're homeschooled, are you attached to a school district, per se?
No, no, you're not attached to a school district. No. And I.
I guess what we need to do is have a study session.
Yeah, what I think we need to do.
Because I need to review this information.
What I, what I like to do, and all due respect, my vice president, I'm sitting in for him, and I didn't know I was going to be called up here. So the aim was for him to have been here today, but something came up, and I shared this with the superintendent's office. What I like to do, because this is such a superb program, and it's being used by many school districts, I want you to take advantage of this. So it may be wise for me to come back, maybe we can have another meeting. But I do want you to know that the recruiting efforts are beginning right now for the fall semester. And we want to take advantage of all of the marketing and advertisement as soon as possible. The later you wait, it's going to be difficult. So I would enjoy coming back with my vice president, who can speak specifically, in regards to any questions you may have, because I'm on board, only six months.
Okay.
And I think that's only fair, instead of me trying to wing it. That, that, I'm just, that's just not right. I want you to have the best. So.
And if you have any questions that, you know, you kind of, I've jotted down a couple. But if any other questions.
I got one.
I just need to go with information.
You said that, that this is already being inputted, or input already in the system? Is that correct, from K, K through eight?
Not from this company.
Yeah, not from this company.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, I believe.
From another company?
Yes. Okay, so, when you say a couple of years ago, are you saying that we started it, then we stopped? Because what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get some data. I would like to analyze the data and look at the students, how they, what success level of how well they were doing in the classroom, when they had the teacher, the, the teacher-to-student ratio versus how, when they started the program, if some got into the program, how they're doing now. I would like to know, are they doing better? Are they doing worse? Did it stay the same? Which would kind of give me an idea of how this program, how it affects us, how it affects the students, if it's a good program for our kids. Because all students don't learn the same. But it is an option.
And that's why, that's why we're saying, we're not trying, it's, it's not anything we're trying to do for, for everybody. It's just another option to provide for, for anyone who might be interested, because of the, the very complete nature in the curriculum that they're providing, and the, the multifaceted aspects where they actually have kits.
That's right.
That families receive, so that they, science kits to do things, social studies kits with things in it, math kits. So when we've got those families who, who are out there, who, as he said, the brick and mortar is not what they're interested in, for whatever the reason, it will give a viable option for them. But, you know, I'll see if I can, as much of what you've asked, I'll see what I can find.
I would really like to know how valuable the company is to our district. Nothing, not to say that it's not a good comp, a good company, but it may not necessarily be good for our students. And the only way we're going to know that is if we have some sort of data where we can look at where the kids were, if they're making As, and then they drop to Bs, or which ones got improved, which ones didn't get approved, and be able to have an assessment, overall assessment of, you know, what's taking place, and look at the evaluation sheet from there, and make a decision.
If you get a moment, please look at the pamphlets that I gave you. There's some wonderful information in there that can answer a lot of your questions.
Could you also forward a list of districts that are using this, that is, like, near us, within maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty miles?
Oh, boy.
If there's like that many of them.
We might be able to get his list from Michigan, and then we can.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just a Michigan list, at least in the immediate counties around us.
Absolutely. And I wish I could.
If you just forward that, yeah, you just give it to our superintendent.
I can send that to you tomorrow morning, that's not a problem. I know that River Roots, E Course.
Yeah, just, if you can just send the list.
Just send it to us.
I can send that, I can send that.
Yeah, don't even try to pull it out.
No problem.
Just send it, and then we'll get it out, and then you'll have it.
No problem. Any additional questions that?
Yes. Well, I'd kind of like to know if the grades that these children get, if they're included in our numbers, for when we, you know, we look at our grades, the classes, are these children included in that, or no?
No, my understanding is they're not. You mean, like, their class grades and those kinds of things?
Yeah, yeah. And testing? Do they not do the standard testing that are?
The testing, the testing, but it comes off as homeschooled. So there's a distinction.
It's four home, like, homeschooled, homeless families.
Yeah.
That kind of, right.
Absolutely.
Juvenile probation programs and stuff like that is where I would think it would, it would be not, I guess I don't want to encourage anyone to not send their kids to the public schools, send them online.
No, and we do want them to come. And, and that's absolutely, we don't want to siphon off. We don't. But we also, if there are any students out there.
It's been expelled.
Absolutely.
Like our city high school.
Yes.
That work.
Absolutely.
How much money does our city get, when it's cut and dried? How much do you get? And how much does our city get? Are we recruiting just for?
No, no, no. We're doing the recruiting. And I don't know what the FTE count is in this district. Is it about seventy-two hundred? I don't know what it is here, but our company take a percentage of it. And we will provide additional dollars to your school district. So there's a win-win situation. We do all the work, we take percentage of it, and then another percentage will go as additional revenue to your district.
Dr. Daniels, what is the timeline? Are, is this something that you, we are proposing to implement for the thirteen, fourteen school year?
We want to do it for the thirteen, fourteen school year, if we can.
Okay, and?
Absolutely.
What would be the timeline on how we would need to get that done?
Well, the sooner the better, because as he's saying, in order to, you know, do the recruiting, you know, we want to, we want to capture the students that would be out there, you know?
But it sounds like there's some, that we're doing some support, that our teachers have to be able to have interaction and answer questions and help the students, too, so.
The primary thing on our end would be to.
Yeah, to assign a mentor. And that mentor will be in contact with the online students on a weekly basis.
Who pays the mentor?
Yeah, that sounds like a teacher work.
Well.
We're having a hard time hearing up here. Thank you.
And, you know, perhaps these are some of those questions that we can pull together, yeah, and, and have a Q and A developed. So, you know, for anyone in the audience, if you will make sure that you submit those questions for us, we'll make sure that we get that included with, with some of the other items. And then have, then put together a document for Q and A.
Okay, sounds good.
That will address those issues.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
The next thing that I'd like to, to discuss, one of the things that we know has been in the news, that is going to impact, you know, Romulus Community Schools, and that is the, the legislation that was set by the, the government to, for the dissolution of Inkster Public Schools. Inkster Public Schools and Buena Vista had until today at five o'clock to submit proof that they would be able to secure the funds to be open for the coming school year. And they were required to get two documents, one from a lending agency, you know, a bank, and then also from their, from an auditing firm. Neither school was able to meet that requirement. As a result, the district is now formally going to be dissolved. The Wayne County RISA has been working in case this day came, and, you know, and I'd like for everyone to understand, this is a, this is a sad day, for something like that to happen to a school district. That's not a good thing for education. But we are where we are, and we're going to move forward. There are four school districts who are going to be impacted by, by Wayne, by, by Inkster's situation. Those four are Taylor, Westwood, W. Those four are Taylor, Westwood, Wayne Westland, and Romulus Community Schools. What Wayne RISA has done is, you know, they, they have been working diligently, you know, over the past few weeks, to try to come up with some type of way to ensure that those students will be able to, you know, be provided with an education. And, and so what they did, they divided the school district into four parts. The cross streets for the, the separation are Michigan Avenue and Middle Belt. Michigan Avenue and Middle Belt. So, when you look at a map, you draw that, and those are the, the four quadrants. The section of this, that, of the district that will now become a part of, of Romulus Community Schools is the southwest quarter. Currently, currently in the school district, students who are Inkster residents, who are currently enrolled in Inkster Public Schools, and this is K-12, there are currently 380 students. Those students will now become a part of, you know, our student body, Romulus Community Schools. This may have an impact on our enrollment. All of those students do not have to elect to come here. If there are school of choi, uh, schools with choice, they have that opportunity to elect to go someplace and make application as school of choice students someplace else. And what I'm, I'm just discussing now is about these numbers. And, so, you know, that's one thing that's going to impact, even though this is the number of students who are enrolled, who are living there, that's going to be one number, you know, that's going to be, you know, possibly impacting it. We also do not know if, if we receive those students, if we're going to be able to hold the students that we have, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is hold on to our own students. So, if we get additional students, will those students be above what we currently have? Or will they offset a loss that we may have? So, we really don't know, in the end, how this is going to really shake out until camp day. It would be my hope that we could keep our kids and our new family members coming in and, and cause a boost for us, but I don't know that. The best I can say is that that would be my hope. There are many things that are still relatively fluid, and they're putting together some, they're trying to put together some information, you know, to help us out with it. But, that is, right now, though, and one of the things that we're, we're having to make sure that we're working with is, you know, that there's, because of the nature of the legislation, this is what it is. Now, one of the things also that's going to go along with it, according to the legislation also, when the areas are identified, any of their facilities that are in those areas, those become ours. The facility that they have that is included in the portion that is now going to be us is where Inkster High School is. We are not required to use the school. If we choose to try to sell it, the proceeds from the sale go towards the debt of Inkster, of Inkster's debt. So, that would go there.
Do we incur Inkster debt also?
No, we do not. I'm sorry.
A keep on the building?
Well, for right now, you know, and, and those are some of the kinds of things that, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at. You know, even if, if we put it up for sale, you know, depending on how quickly we sell it, you know, how much heat do we have to keep going, keep the pipes from bursting, and, you know, some of those kinds of things. But, you know, some of the legislation is very clear, some of it is not. Some of it is, is still kind of subject to interpretation, so we're still, I'm trying to give you anything that I know definite. That's what I'm trying to share out, you know, right now. Some of the other things, some of the things that you're asking, others of us have questions about it, they just have not come out to us yet. So, you know, that's kind of where we are. The, you know, I, I, one of the things that it would be, you know, my, my true desire and my true hope, as, as we are bringing in new family members, that they come in and we help them understand they are our family. And, you know, do those kinds of things that we will, we will need to do. What, what we're looking at on our end is, we're looking at, you know, how that's going to roll out, and where we've got space in different buildings, and there just, there's, there's a list of questions and things that we're trying to, to work through. So, that's the, that's the, kind of the hot off the presses. I just received an email from Chris Weigent, who is the, the superintendent of Wayne County, you know, at, at RISA. And there is also, there's also a press release that has gone out now. So, it is absolutely official now. Question?
Yeah, are the quadrant that we're supposed to have, did we literature drop that area yet? Or could we redo it?
No, we, we have, and we're good again.
Because on the news tonight, a lot of parents are talking about, they don't know where they're going to send their kids, they have to look around, so.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
We may want to fly everything in there to make sure we get us some of those.
Make sure that they.
Dr. Daniels, could you talk about the, the Michigan High School Athletic Association, the eligibility?
Right.
Because I know that.
Yeah, Ms. Fundenberg was in the meeting with me this morning, and one of the questions that had come up was about, you know, eligibility. So, any students who are coming in would be eligible, you know, they don't have to have that wait time. So, they, they would be eligible, you know, to, to play the sports.
Do we know how many per grade? Do we know any of that yet?
That we really don't. They had a general breakdown, you know, high school, middle school, elementary school, and I really didn't copy those down right then, because he didn't have it, you know, to, to pass out.
I agree.
But I can get that, you know. And, and now that this has happened, now we'll be able to get names also with grades, so we can even break it down by grade level. And we're scheduled for another meeting on Wednesday. There are also, the, part of the discussion is the, the equipment and, you know, materials from the district.
Buses?
That will be.
They're outsourced.
They're outsourced.
They have Trinity.
They don't have buses.
So, you know, those are some of the, the questions that we're still having to work out. Not, not an easy task, difficult one, very, very difficult.
Like question on that, if they're buses, if they outsource those buses, could they be in the same condition where they're leased, and if that contract is broke, would they resort back to pay the debt, or back to the district? You know, does Trinity absorb their buses? You know what I'm saying?
I don't know.
So, maybe that's something we need to look at too, because if, you know, they no longer need Trinity, obviously, if those buses were leased, if that's the last year of their contract, if they resort back to the school district, might be something that we can get.
Talk about the buses.
Because I'm sure when they outsource their busing, I'm sure the buses went to Trinity, correct? Probably, most likely.
I, I really don't know that. But yes, I'll, I'll put that, that down. And what I'd also like, again, in a similar way, that we're talking about the, the virtual learning, if there are any questions that anyone would like for me to make sure I get, you know, forwarded, you know, from the audience, if you would forward those questions on, to us, we can make sure that we get those, you know, in the mix. And if you can, if you get them to me tomorrow, I can have them for the, my meeting on Wednesday. Again, everyone is, you know, really trying to figure out what this is going to look like. My, again, my hope is that we just show that, you know, Romulus is family, and that's what we're going to really try to make sure that everyone understands, that they're, they're family members, and, and go, go forward in that fashion. So, again, I'd, I'd really like to stress, if you have any kind of questions that you think you want to make sure that we address, be sure to let us know, because any questions that you have, we're going to make sure that we get it out there. Oh, I know one other thing. Where test scores are concerned, and I had another addition to it, but where test scores are concerned, no district will be assuming the test scores of any of the, the students for three years. You know, I think there's some other ramifications, but, you know, that, that is another, that is another piece. So, but I, again, I can't stress enough that if you've got questions, because we've been trying to pull up, throw out as many as we can, but if you have some other ones, we will most definitely, you know, make sure that we bring them forward.
Do we?
Board members in community, yes.
Do we know if Inkster has a thriving community ed program?
They got rid of that.
Did they?
They, they had one that was, you know, very strong, and so now, I'm not sure exactly where some of those students are. I know we marketed to them, though.
Right.
We, we did send special marketing out to them for that, to let them know, so that was one of the things that we had done. Because we knew that, you know, there were some who hadn't picked up, you know, someplace else, so.
And I said their numbers are still high, we, we could that building, chop that building up to later on future years.
To do.
Move community high over there for them.
Okay.
How much money, if you say we've been doing this for a few years, how much money has that actually brought in?
Okay, for what's that, the virtual?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have to get that number for you, because I don't have it right at my fingertips, but I'll. So, that's back up with. I bear a pardon.
How do they recruit the students?
Oh, for the company?
Yeah.
They do flyers, they, they try to make contact through organizations, you know, in the community, or, you know. Your, your recruitment.
Well, we advertise heavily. We spend thousands of dollars, we do TV ads, we partner with K-12, by the way, K-12 Online Learning, which is the largest provider of online learning in the country. So, we partner with them. We recruit, I put down signs, you name it, marketing, advertising, that's what I do for, is recruit. And we do this for my office in Auburn Hills, Michigan.
Do we pay the cost for that?
No. We do all of the recruiting and marketing. We, and we do it all. You do nothing.
For the recruitment, all right.
Okay.
Moving on.
All righty. Um, we're now at item D, the deficit elimination reduction options. And these are, these are options. Oh, okay, these are one of each. It's the same thing you had before.
This is what we got.
It's got an addition.
It's got, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's the same information you received last week, although items 35 and 36 are new, are, per your request.
And then I.
Items 35 and 36.
And then I have something too for everybody, which is the, I pulled this off of MDE, it's the deficit district requirements, and what the statute and how it reads, just for reference.
You know, and, and we've come to the, the point that's a tough point. What, what, these are options that you've seen, that, you know, we discussed, and as, as the, as the chief educational leader, you know, I am providing options, not recommendations that are going to impact any of our student programs, anything that's good for what our, our children need to be academically successful, and, and to grow into the kind of citizens that we are trying to help them to become. So, now I turn it over to Mrs. Beard.
Do we, can we go over the reduction list that we've, Sherry, can you go over this list, what we've done so far?
The items that have already been approved?
Yes, and we're, and explain the worksheet.
Sure.
I don't know if everybody has one of them.
It would be, excuse me, it would be the spreadsheet that starts with item number one. So, the first item is the elimination of a school social worker. Number two is to close Merriman School and move the community high school to the high school in a separate location or separate wing of the building.
Excuse me, Sherry, these are things.
These are things that have already been completed, the board has already approved and acted upon prior to June, or on June 24th or prior to.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
Number three, reduce board member compensation. Number four, reduce the athletic budget in the amount of about $41,500. Number five, ratification of the Romulus Education Association contract.
And I want to go back just a second to the reduction of the athletic budget. This was the portion, you know, we had talked about the possibility of pay to play, and the board, you know, was, was not in favor of that, so this is what we saw, that we thought we would have realized.
We figured that the savings, we could get the savings.
Yes.
Within the budget itself, as opposed to charging the residents for a pay to play option.
So, that is not it.
And it's $41,500.
Moving on, number six, custodial reduction with the elimination of three positions. Number seven, eliminated through attrition, the plumber position, that's one FTE on the maintenance side. Number eight, a reduction in security of two full-time equivalents. Number nine, the ratification of the Romulus Association of School Administrators. Number 10, the ratification of concessions from the central office group. And I'll go back, number nine, obviously, is concessions, I didn't really state that, but that's what that means, which is the RASA contract ratification. Number 11, contracted sub-savings for bid, if you remember, we went, we're from PCMI to ADUSTF. We put a bid out to, in hopes of receiving reduced percentages or fees, and, and we accomplished that. Number 12, the elimination of elementary Spanish. Number 13, the elimination of three bus driver positions. Number 14, through attrition, elimination of a secretary position. And that is it.
Okay, and that comes up to 3.4?
Correct.
And we, so we still have 5.1?
Correct.
And under the bu, budget deficit, deficit plan, we have to be at zero by 2015?
June 30th, 2015. I'm sorry, June 30th, 2015.
Okay. We have to have that in by when?
The 28th. It's 30 days from the date we received the letter, which was.
So, that, that's the change then, because we thought it was July 31st.
The letter specifically says from the date that we got the letter.
Okay, so then that would be.
And I was originally told it was from the date that the district actually went into deficit, which would have been June 30th or July 1st.
Oh, okay, but it said from the time that we received.
The letter specifically says 30 days from the date of this letter, which was dated June 28th, and we received it on July 9th.
Really?
Yes.
And one of the penalties, if you look on this sheet that I gave you, for the, what the requirements are, the district that fails to meet the MDE deadline for submission of a DEP will immediately withhold school, state school aid payments. So, if we don't get it in by the deadline, we could possibly not get our payments. Sherry, I noticed that, like, we've already approved for the 13, 14 year.
Sherry, I noticed that, like, we've already approved for the 13, 14 year, 3.4 in reduction.
Mm-hmm.
So, then if we keep those same next year, we'll reduce it another 3.4, which is 6.8.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I'm wondering why it isn't the difference between 8.6 minus 6.8?
Because when the state looks at this year, this particular 13 budget, they're not looking at next year. So, they look, it says right in the language, that they particularly look at this year.
But that sounds like they're expecting us to eliminate it in one year.
No.
So, you're putting this on the, the list to be at zero by 2015?
Correct.
So, a lot of these cuts could potentially be done in the 14, 15 school year.
It could be.
And if we get all these FTEs from Inkster, we try to project this, that we're going to get this, we could actually be out of debt, because the money we get for these FTEs can be applied to our deficit budget, correct?
You could submit a plan as such.
Right.
And it's up to the state's leisure whether they accept that or not.
Right. I mean, they, I mean, hopefully they're taking consideration that we are going to absorb a lot of these students.
And I can't answer that for them?
Right.
And in doing that, we also have to remember, we're not just wanting to absorb those, but we've got to keep who we have.
Right.
Alright. And the reason they don't look in that second year, because they can't wait a whole year to, to have you try to figure out what your problem is. They want you to immediately attend to it so that, because if you don't, that's one less year of savings you're going to get, which, you know, just keeps on, the mountain keeps getting higher.
I guess I don't understand then why we can't say that the total for the two years, like, for the first one, it would be eighty-seven thousand times two, because we're going to be saving half in one year and half in the next.
But we still have debt that we incur, you know, every year. You're going through your whole year. We don't know where we're going to end up at the end.
Right.
Plus tricky lift.
And, and that's kind of where, you know, where we lose students. We don't know what our student count is yet, so we kind of, we're kind of guessing right now.
There are some assumptions. For example, you're aware that the budget includes a reduction of 200 FTEs.
Right.
So, we have done that. So, we graded that, then materialized?
Most of the other assumptions were, you know, MIPS' rates, where insurance was going to be, we're at the hard cap, that's a little bit easier to determine. Really, we're, we're left out there with the enrollment situation, because we do have today's property tax values. I mean, they do change throughout the year. In terms of real property, not significantly, but that is a variable that we're, we're faced with every, you know, June through September until we get those students in our seats. We're faced with a dilemma, what is it really going to look like?
The property values, have those?
Those have stayed consistent.
Are they starting to climb yet, or?
No.
Okay.
No, they're still reducing. Unfortunately, Romulus is one area, and community members can probably attest to that from their bills, there's reductions in the values.
So, we haven't bottomed out yet?
We have not.
Okay. So, we have to let her know which?
Which direction. I need to know which direct, you know, it's your plan. It'll be submitted by me on behalf of the Board of Education. So, I need direction on how you would like that plan submitted.
So, Sherry, if we're not at the zero, and I know we can amend this as we go, as things happen, then if it's kicked back, then what happens?
We have several days, couple of weeks. If you go back, I don't know if you brought this with you, it's a timeline, our expected timeline, if that were to happen. We'd be looking at possibly a two-week review, maybe, by the MDE, and then we'd have about 48 hours, 48 to 72 hours to respond. And I only know the response time, because I've talked to districts who are in this situation, and, you know, the urgency that they're in when they get a call from MDE based on their deficit elimination plan.
So, Sherry, the plan that we have to submit has to get us to zero?
By the end of June 30th, 2015, yes.
And which is, is the deficit, you get money, and if things go good, we can start peeling stuff off that revision track?
You revise your plan, you know, not, I wouldn't recommend this, but if we needed to revise the plan every day, we could revise the plan every day. I'm not suggesting doing that.
Right.
But it's just like your own budget. If we wanted to revise our budget every day, we could do that.
Um, the, on this list, the reductions that would be taken, those, are those going to, would they have to be implemented in the 13, 14 school year, or can you bump them to the 14, 15?
You can choo-, you can choose however you want that to look.
Okay.
I'm just going to caution you that if you, you know, if there's things that you're not ready to consider tonight, you're just prolonging and adding to the deficit by next year.
Right.
Because, again, the more you save now, the.
Correct.
I don't know, did I answer that? Okay.
Okay, so do we go down this list, and we can say what?
No, this will be an official record. I do have to submit, once this is completed, I would assume you're taking, going to take action on these items, because it's required of me to submit the action that the board approved on. So, I've asked Ms. Bosidi to take, Ms. Bosidi's to take very good notes, because they will request this information from me.
So, how do you want to do it? You need to know all of that by tonight, right?
I do.
Well, I'm at that so far.
What's the action? What's the decision in one of these?
I would recommend going, obviously, I numbered them, because sometimes it's easier. Obviously, for the viewing audience, you may want to reference what they are, and for the, those watching at home. We're not, we, um. It would probably take a few minutes to log in. Would you like me to do that?
You guys want to take a recess and then sit down and start on this?
Just one second, yeah. Just let me go. Okay, but let me go to a restaurant.
Five-minute recess.
Can we just make coffee?
Five-minute recess. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order for recess.
Lennon.
Okay, so I guess we want to start going through the list one at a time?
You know, and, and again, I'd like to reiterate the fact that anything that impacts our students' academic program, and any program that would help to ensure that they are successful, that is our mission, and I, I, you know, anything that's going to impact that, I cannot support. But it is, we do serve at the, at the board's pleasure.
Sherry, sorry.
I have a problem with the fact that we're being forced to make students that are rivals of the Romulus Education. You already have a problem with the RISD, you already have a problem with Florida. I mean, it's, it's really sad, or you can tell me you're not in a good environment. Um, there's a problem with, um, there's a student law, and what's the impact that students are going to be in what they have to face and what you, you know, I mean, how are we going to get rid of the RISD, you know, and how are we going to bring, if we outsource classes, our kids, to save money, how are we going to send classes over to the schools and then some field costs and more money? I'm not, I'm not a financial wizard, but I have a lot of comments that, and I am, I do know additional stuff attracts a lot of education, and I am not, why? What we really need to do is admit that we don't know what's happening, and, you know, and that we don't know how to teach, because in the middle of trying to heal our own business, they're being forced to take students that we're not prepared to teach. We don't have enough teachers. How come schools, schools bring up such a student, and schools are always going to run one on campus? We have over crowded classrooms, and then we bring in somebody talking about teaching online. In other words, we're going to bring these students in from here to Austin, you know, we don't like our district, and it's just teaching online. And then the good gentleman, who I have no problem with, to name the cities that they have already put these online schools, those are failed cities. It, it, I probably would have jumped there, and maybe he said, well, South Hills, Uptown, or whatever, these courses are failed cities. Okay, these are failed cities that have these online courses. So, that tells me, well, they give these problems to you, so now, we're telling Romulus, because now we're part of that problem, so one of those problems, failed cities.
Well, you, you've addressed a couple of things. The one where the, the virtual learning is concerned, that's just trying to provide a service for parents who are homeschooling their students already, that's all, who are not connected with an official program, so that they can have the vehicle and the materials and some of the guidance, you know, to, to help make sure that what their students have. We're not trying to siphon off of the students that we currently have at all. We're just, if there are those out there who that is a service that they would like, you know, that's absolutely correct. As far as, you know, the students coming in and us having no say, the legislation is, legislation is what's dictated that. It has not been, any of the communities, definitely not Inkster, but, and, and everyone needs to, to know that educators have been lobbying against this heavily, because they've seen how detrimental this is, not only to the communities, but to the students, to the families. But it has fallen on deaf ears at the legislature, even Superintendent Flanagan. Even though he's been given the task of having to make some of those final determinations, he spoke out against that legislation. You can go onto the MDE website online, and one of the, the things that you can click on is where he says, "This legislation is not good for kids." But this is the hand that we've been dealt right now. Now, if, and, and if there is a concern, you know, we do want to make sure that we do recognize that if there are issues and our problems with our students that we have coming together right now, that we work through that, you know, and, and we're going to be family or we're not, and we got to work it out. And, you know, we, and, and if we have new family members coming in, that's another thing. We got to work it out. We got to figure out how to work it out. When you say, "We kind of don't know what we're doing with all of this piece," it's so fluid, you're right, we are doing the best that we can with what we've got to work with. And, you know, and it's incumbent upon us, where I'm coming from, is we've got to make this work for us. And, you know, they've, they've dealt the hand, but how we play it, we've got to make sure that we rise to the top as a community, that, you know what, we don't care what you deal to us. We're made out of what it takes to make sure that we pull together, and if it means looking at some things that are there that we need to work on, we do it. We pull that out, we talk about it. And, but then we come together, because this is where it is, and it's not anything that anyone who's being directly impacted was in favor of. None of us, we were not. But this is where it is. And, you know, I, I, they, a team from Inkster went up to the, to the, and, and Buena Vista, they went to try to talk to the legislators. They went and tried to talk to the Department of Education, but it kind of fell on deaf ears. And what I think the Department of Education gave them was, well, we're going to give you till today at 5:00, to see what you can come up with. In the absence of it, the legislation that the legislators passed stands. If you go back and really kind of review how it went, it went straight all, pretty straight along party lines. And there were those who spoke eloquently, and our representatives included, our senator, were diametrically opposed to what was going on, because they saw it was not good for their communities, they knew it was not good for kids, they knew it was not educationally sound. But the people who are in control right now, and, you know, and, and it's dangerous when you end up, and, and I don't, and right now, I'm not speaking of whether, what your party affiliation is, when your checks and balances are gone, you know, when the Senate, the House, and the, the governor's seat are all won.
Right.
Then that check and balance is not there, and, and that's where we are right now. So, you know.
The timeline, there was no, because they set this.
They set this, they set this timeline, and that was one of the biggest frustrations that RISA had. You, you're giving us some, even if a, if a, uh, emergency manager was coming in, they were going to have 90 days to do something, we don't. And it's, and it's not just there to, it's in the legislation. It's in the legislation.
It's law.
And so, therefore, as a result, we now, this is what we've got, and we've got to go forward and make it work as positively as we can, and that's as good as it gets for us right now.
How is it that the actual students know about the change? Because.
On Wednesday, on Wednesday, I, I will be at another meeting, and that's when we're going to start rolling out some more specifics, which is why I was saying, if you have any questions, that you'd like for me to take that, to that meeting on Wednesday, if you can get them to me, I'll make sure that I have them there and try to represent.
I would like to make a statement, and, um, I want to get this statement off my chest before we even start doing this. This is the way I feel personally. I've been praying about it, and this is where I came from. This is, this is what I come up with. After taking a good look at all this stuff that was eliminated, or might be eliminated, let me make that correct, I have said once, time and time again, that I have a problem with eliminating any programs for the kids. I have a problem with asking citizens to pay more taxes. I have a problem with cutting a whole slew, a whole department, Local 64, and, not just Local 64, but any group of people, without looking at the facts, all of the facts. And what I mean by that is, I'm looking, even though, you know, I know that we've done some, um, we've went on, went across the table and looked at different contracts, I still feel personally, that before we go into cutting from the programs, before we go into any of this, we still have some fat that need to be trimmed at the top. That's how I personally feel. I don't care what anybody thinks. You know, it's, it's not to try to get any brownie points, I'm being honest as I possibly can. If that means that we have to go to administration departments, assistant principals, teachers, and take an additional 20 to 25 percent cut, then that's what we got to do. We got to adjust healthcare paid by the district. If we got to consolidate and reconstruct positions, then that's what we have to do. I, or either, even, even directors, whatever it takes, from the top on down. And I know we did the 10 percent, but we know that's not enough. We know that's not enough. And it bothers me that we got people in administration in higher positions that's making 90, 90 grand and up, mid-90 grand and up, that Romulus have been good to, okay? And yet, we in this situation, you know the circumstances. It seemed like you would be willing, if you want to say we a family, then stand behind your word. You know what I'm saying? Don't, don't say we a family, and yet, you still hiding your hand at the same time. You know, if, if, if it's going to say, help save some money, lead by example. You want Local 64 to take another cut, why aren't y'all starting at the top and leading by example? But you're the first one to say, oh, have a little faith in administration. Where's my faith now? Where's, where, where's that statement at now? You addressing everything except for that. And I've been sitting back, and I've been sitting back and just letting this go on, because I'm, I already know, I can't sleep at night and do this like this. I can't. I'm going to tell you straight up. I'm a straightforward person, I'm honest, I may not know all the correct terminology, because I just got here, but I'm learning. I'm doing all I can to do the best I can to make sure I make the right decision that's fair and just for everybody, not just one person, for everybody. And that's what I stand for. So, you can go through this list all day, far as I'm concerned. I'm going to sit here and let the majority of the board do what they going to do. Unfortunately, the majority rule, that's how I. Unfortunately, the majority rule, that's how it go. But I can't stand, I can't sit there and sit here and see these programs, you know, just be cut like that, I can't. So, y'all go ahead on and go through the process.
I just wanna say though-
I'm sorry, I can't do it.
But, but I, what I must say though, Ms. Bowles, is that you are us.
I am.
You are one of us.
I am.
And we have to decide at the board.
I am.
But, I don't think any of, I'm just saying, I don't think any of us wanna do any of this. But we have to submit something to the state.
Well, why when I brought some of this stuff to your attention? I brought some of this stuff to your attention, I started in January. When I brought some of this to the attention, and you all didn't do anything about it. Not everybody, let me say that, let me not say you all, cause that's not correct. Some, a majority of the people voted other ways on things. I kept saying all this time, "You're adding to the debt, you're adding to the debt, you're adding to the debt." You do recognize you're adding to the debt. And all the time, it was support, support. I'm being real about it right now, okay? I kept telling you, I kept telling you about, I brought you evidence. I didn't just tell you, I did research, hours of research. I looked up stuff and brought it to you, so you didn't have to believe me. It wasn't about me, I wanted you to get the physical document and see it yourself, and you still didn't say anything. I brought up the contracts, I asked the questions. I asked you to bring in the lawyer, so we can look at these contracts and reconstruct the language of it. And I was told, "You know how much money we spend on a lawyer?" I'm like, "You can't, you're not gonna be able to bring a lawyer in here, we're not gonna request that." We spent over two hundred dollars for an hour for a lawyer. I, I did all I could do to be fair, to be just and honest and fair. This is not fair to me, it's not, it's not. And I can't, I can't do it like that, I'm an honest person, I'm a godly person, I pray constantly, and I just believe in being fair and honest and just. I did all I could do, I asked for it, even though I was new, I asked. And I was told I couldn't have it. And now you wanna sit here and, and give a statement like you so sensitive. We're in this all together, no, you weren't talking that two, three, a month ago, when I was, and asking you questions and trying to get information. You weren't talking that then, but now you talking it. Now it's, oh, we all in this together. Before, I was, "Have a little faith in administration." I'm tired, y'all, I'm tired of this, I'm being honest with you right now. This makes no sense, this shouldn't have been like this. This looks like this been overspending for years. Before we even got to this point, when I was sitting out there, it was overspending. So when I came here and I saw you adding stuff, I brought it to your attention, you do recognize this. Now we in this situation, and you want us to go through and eliminate the programs for the kids? While some of y'all still eating steak and potatoes? I don't think so, y'all go ahead. You all done to eat bologna sandwiches and tuna food, and other people eating bologna, eating steak and potatoes. That's not fair, that's how I feel. It's not, I'm not trying to get any applause, I'm being honest as I possibly can, I've been saying this since day one. And this is just how I feel, so you come on with it.
Okay, let's go.
Go through the list.
Okay, let's go.
We need to start at the beginning.
We're gonna start at the beginning. Number sixteen.
Number sixteen is eliminate CHS. Do I hear anybody?
Community High School.
Can we go through, and you wanna just go through the list, so we can say the things that we, we really don't want to do? And then, then Sherry can tell us what we got left, and then we can go from there.
All right. So what, what-
Is that completely-
So if we do that, it's up-
You won't be in the high school?
How did we get in such a big deficit?
Actually, it is, a lot of it is primarily from the property values plummeting and our student enrollment. We lose at least two hundred kids a year from our district. And the, the numbers from the district though, and just so that everybody's aware, we don't have two hundred kids leaving every year. It's just that birth rates now, people aren't having large families like they used to, and so, you know, we're experiencing the decline in student enrollment. And then you couple that with all of the cuts that have been done at the state level, so you kinda have three-
But the state level, I mean, they just really actually came down really hard to do cuts now. I mean, we have a big deficit. You know, um, other school districts, they have deficits too, but it's not like they're cutting everybody's job out. How did we get to this deficit? Was, was there mistakes made? Um, your board was, you know, what happened here?
I, I, you know-
What happened here?
I'm gonna show you.
Sherry answered the financial part of it.
Sherry, can you-
The district, the board has been adopting budgets for the last, at least the last four years, deficit spending. If you go back and look for the last four years, there's not been a year where we balanced revenue to expenditures. We've been drawing down on fund balance. There, over the past four years, board members, correct me if I'm wrong, you have been brought recommendations on how to balance that budget. You decided as a board, which is your right, it's your budget, whether to cut instructional programs then, or to wait until we didn't have another choice. Fund balance is basically a bu, um, a bank account. So, on any given year, your revenue and expenditures in a nonprofit, you should pretty much match, whatever you bring in, you should spend. Fund balance, you know, if we had five million, you could take five years to draw that down. So let's say last year, you had a five million dollar fund balance, and you were short on revenue a million dollars, now your fund balance is a million dollar, or four million dollars. The next year, you're gonna be down to three million dollars. So if you go back and look, there's a chart that I, every June, I provide as part of my budget development. It has shown the fund balance going down, so it is not a surprise. It was when we were going to do something about it. The board decided to preserve the programs until they couldn't anymore. CDs, I'm sorry, we don't, there is no investments, I mean, we don't have the fund balance, or the, sorry, the cash balance to invest at this point.
I just think the statement that you made about people not having as many kids, I kinda disagree, because here on enrollment is crazy. But in addition, I don't know, and that's true, because we didn't have enough room for all those children, and they are our children that are being-
Well, that's the, the other thing, so, that's the other thing. We're losing students to other districts, because a lot of them have opened up for school of choice. So, I said it was a combination of the birth rates and losing students. Not all of it is attributed to us losing students, but there is in that number, the lower birth rate.
We had gotten that revenue the previous year, so it did not affect us. We had got that revenue, that tax revenue, we received early, that's a-
We got it the year before, but that's the whole year one final.
Correct, right, but that money was sitting in the fund balance, because we had a fund balance. Again, the same thing, we collected that early. I mean, I don't know how else to explain it, except we got that revenue prior to when we should've.
I was just saying, with that, my curiosity was, why did we get that screwed up, why did we pull that early in that year? And you had a year difficult, and you had to take it back, and then the next year, we should've pulled again, and we took it back, and we pulled it back. So you kind of, it's funny, it was like just a moment of being used to solve-
No, no. Does anybody from the board wanna respond to that?
How many years was it that we didn't assess the-
One year.
And we pay back?
One year, and then we lowered the mills, cause it used to be eight point four nine, and we went down to five point four one three one.
We less, yeah, for the non-homestead.
Correct.
Okay, we still have to come up with things for Sherry to put on this debt plan, so. Okay, so if we know that, if we're not gonna look at the transportation piece, I don't think anybody does it. Are we, well, let's go back to sixteen.
So elimination of CHS, which was retaining thirty students at the high school. That's the prediction.
Right, that's the prediction. Besides the moving expenses, and modi, and modifying the section of that building to fit this program's needs.
Did they start that already?
They did start.
Did they stop?
They, I, they, I was instruct, I instructed them to stop. Between June twenty-fourth, when it was approved, and, and, you know, last week. Basically, it, the net effect is zero besides the moving expenses. If we were to retain students, obviously, you know, and we're estimating, we're assuming, but again, you can't guarantee those students will stay with us in the high school.
How many students are we?
We're estimating thirty out of sixty. So basically, you know, you're losing half of your revenue.
Okay. Please, we keep going.
The next one is to eliminate general ed transportation.
Can I, um, you haven't done anything with sixteen.
Right.
But, just for the psycho, I think seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-nine, and thirty just need to be taken off, period.
Number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
I agree.
There was another one you mentioned.
Twenty-nine.
Okay.
And thirty.
Okay.
All of those are transportation pieces.
Did you say twenty, or you said, you said twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine and thirty, so seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, I'm sorry, well, nineteen is, is mine. Um, so seventeen and eighteen, excuse me, um, twenty-nine and thirty.
Support a grant those, to eliminate those off of, to not consider those.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the early college program should be considered either.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sandy, you agree?
Are you paying attention to that?
Right, I think that, um, the, the student cost, the student FTE should cover most of that, I don't understand why.
Okay, so now we're at nineteen.
No, we're taking it off, Teresa.
We're gonna take off, eliminate early college program.
So even though it's gonna cost the district money we don't have?
Yeah, but we're, we're getting, you go, I'm, you go, you have to have something for the kids to come to.
I understand that.
And although you don't agree that, or are in favor of the early college program, there are other members on this board, like you said, it's a majority-
That's right, so y'all go for it.
-who think that is a good program, and that it will bring additional students into our district. It's a brand-new program, you know, so we haven't officially rolled it out. But I've got a couple of parents in here who think that it's going to be an exceptional program, so they would totally disagree with you. So I don't understand, you know, it's really, it's brand new.
That's money we gotta actually spend upfront. And what I told them from the beginning is that there was different options that they could have taken. They did not have to have that particular option. And the board voted anyway on this particular option to spend for approximate, that mean, we gotta come up with the upmo, the money upfront. Understand that, okay? For, the first year they got down here in the, in the presentation, twenty-five students per grade level, the cost for the first year is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. That need, that means per student is five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. What I said to them then was the same thing. I told them, "We don't have the money to put upfront like that." I said, "Let's, let's look at a different way that we can go at this particular program." Not that the program is not a good program, I never said that. I said, "There's other options that we could look at in regards to getting this program up and running in the district." And this is the program that they brought to us, meaning the people that came over from this particular school. That's just twenty-five students, okay? So I just want y'all to know, this is the option, just wanted you to know that. I also told them about the fact that there was different schools that contracts were not updated along with this particular school. So that means when these students go to, uh, graduate, okay? And they wanna transfer their gra, their grades over, transfer their grades from a community college to a university. If these particular, uh, contracts for these particular universities are not updated, there's a possibility that these students could be enrolled and still not be able to attend the colleges that they wanted to go to, because the contract is not updated. I showed them this list, I showed them, I went online, picked up the list that shows you some, the last update for one of them was, what's this? April two thousand, April eleven, two thousand and eleven, what year is it? Okay, so the president came here, I'm telling him information, instead, he's still trying to, seemed like to me, he was still trying to, you know, talk, trying to, in other words, trying to push us to go into this particular program, instead of saying, "Thank you for telling me that information, I didn't know it was out there, I'll make sure we get this updated, and we get this corrected before we started the program." Has anybody got back with the president as of yet and said, "Is this information, all of these different colleges that you had on here that says the contracts need to be updated, are they updated as of yet?" My main objective was, I'm looking out for the kids' sake, not just how much money we gonna get per kid. I wanna make sure these kids that come into this program can do what it is that they wanna do, if it is whatever college they wanna go to. I said, "I didn't have a problem with the program," but the way we are supposed to come up with this money upfront, and we already in debt, how is that supposed to happen?
Would you like to make a motion to remove the program?
I would like to make a motion for you all to go back and to relook at the program and come up with a different option as a way of we can do this other than us putting the money upfront. That's all I gotta say.
But the only, only thing is, is that there are kids that won't go to a four-year university. A two-year degree is a two-year degree, and it helps the parents not to-
It's an associate's degree.
And it's a associate's degree, so if you can, if you gotta do a couple credits or whatever to make up for the ones that don't transfer, but a associate's degree is an associate's degree, and it's a benefit, I feel, to our children and to the parents of this community, that they will have a degree when they graduate, a two-year degree.
Well, that, that-
And the nice thing is, but, we were, we were charged with, we were charged from the community to find ways to bring students in. We were charged, we heard that loud and clear. Do something innovative, do something to get the students in here, that's what we were asked to do.
And the other thing too, is the fact of the amount of money that it will be saving families whose children are considering post-secondary education. Because the, the expense of having to go to college for an associate's degree and maybe even a bachelor's has gotten so expensive, we felt like this was a great opportunity for us to put something viable in place that could enable them to go. And, and that it's taxpayers' dollars that is, is funding it. And so, they're not having to come out with, for an extra, you know, six or seven thousand dollars a year to pay for college tuition for their students.
Isn't that what grants are for, that they-
And we have a great reception on the program too.
I mean, you keep spending money.
Right, and we, we get that, but, but we're also-
And then you're gonna have an E income, and it's how you, you're doing it wrong.
And I, you know, and I, I guess this is also that opportunity to capture those people who wouldn't consider post-secondary because of the financial burden that it would have. And so, those were some of the benefits as to why this particular program is put in place. You know, so it, it's sounding like half of the people say it's a great idea, and the other half are like, "Why did we do it?"
If you bring forty students, and you've more than well-paid for the program, and you made a profit.
If.
And you're right, you're if.
If, that's all we've been dealing with since we've been up here, is if. That's part of the reason how we got here, because we didn't have nothing concrete. It was always if, I'm done, y'all can decide to do what you want. I think, as a whole, you really need to reconstruct the program. I said it the first time, I say it again, you ask me a year from now, I tell- I said it the first time, I say it again, you ask me a year from now, I tell you the same thing. Rather than the school district coming out of this kind of money and we already in debt, we don't have the money to come out and put upfront. We haven't even came up with a plan. If we did put this kind of money upfront, how are we expected to get this money back? What have we had the parents sign to say they're going to pay us back this money? We haven't did any of that yet. And I was like, before we even go into going into putting this into play, we need to make sure we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. I said that then, I say that again, but y'all go ahead and do what you want to do.
The FTEs will cover the cost for the community college. We're already paying taxes, everyone's paying taxes to support the community colleges. And the FTEs will cover that students, instead of paying our teachers here at the high school, it's going to cover the tuition there at the school. So, and the parents have to provide their own transportation so that, um, basically what we're saying is, we're going to, and the state will give them the extra year. The state will pay their, their full allowance, student allowance for the extra fifth year so that they will come out with an associate's degree. Why would you not take advantage of the state paying for additional education so that your child would have a better opportunity? I mean, if you're looking at a high school education and associate's degree, the employer's going to hire the one with associate's degree. It will, it will benefit the children and that's what we're here for, is to benefit the children.
Wouldn't it benefit the children as well if they had the opportunity to actually go and be in an actual real college setting?
They, they are going to do that to me.
With real college professors instead of them coming here?
No.
Don't we have to pay for the, don't we have to pay for them to come here? Don't we have to pay?
They're not coming there.
They're going to the college.
Well, that's not how he explained it. He explained it that we were going to have them come here, we were going to have to pay for the teacher or whoever to come over to our areas.
No, we're sending our children there. And, and they're providing, the, the parents have to provide the transportation.
Okay, if you've got the money, let's go.
Get back on the list.
All right.
We gotta come up with something for her, so.
Take it off.
I have a question about the early college program.
Yes.
The deficit, and what we're suggesting is how the, the deficit of money, competition for, so if there was a money in competition, why are we cutting it?
It's just an option.
We don't need to cut.
Right. We just took it off.
We took it off.
We're taking it off.
It was only a recommendation from.
Yeah, all of this whole list are recommendations.
It was a recommendation of a board member.
It's a possibility, hopefully. We don't know.
We will, um, gain.
We hope.
Yeah. And this is what we gained some from other, that had left our school district and came back for this program.
Right.
And the, the goal is that more people will see the advantage of getting an associate's degree and, and switch to our schools.
Right.
Okay, the next item on the list is elimination of high.
Very well put, Sandy. Very well put, Sandy.
I have a thought that would be, because if you're trying to make a decision, you're wanting to give up the town in a system that's already going down, you can't do it that way. And young radio says, say it already, it's a good idea, but it's a tiny, we're struggling. And you can see that as, okay, your child is using that station, but you're telling me, Sherry, you're telling, you bring your outsource and resources, if you possess a district that is safe, if you're possessing a district where you're talking about cutting the, 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 the.
Yeah. Explain that.
Sometimes we're picking leaves off a tree that needs to come down when we need to pick the wood.
Go ahead, Mr. Bean.
If we, the man about the security, the, the security positions were eliminated when they closed Vermin School and moved Community High over to the high school. So, those two positions were eliminated because I believe they're going to pick up the security at the high school because those students will be there.
There was only one position, one security position at Community and they're cutting that program completely out. So, now you're eliminating two at the high school and one at the middle school for you to this, so now you're going to be three short.
And I think part of that too was, was that part of the, with the, um, the school resource officers, was that, what impacted that, part of that decision?
And I think that's when we added two, one for the middle school and one for, to rotate to the elementaries. And I vote, I voted against that. I said, I could support one at the middle school because I think that their presence would maybe stop some of the bullying and the issues there, but that I couldn't, I couldn't understand why we would say, oh, our elementary schools are so unsafe, we need them at the elementary schools. Um, so I really, at the time that the contract was brought before us, said I would like it to be just, see if they would just do the one at the middle school and not do it at the elementary. And I would still like to see that, to see if the city would do that and so that we would still have one at the high school and the middle school, but do away with one at the, um, elementary schools that would rotate.
And then that saves, if that was, one was cut, would be 75,000.
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
The $75,000 is the new school resource officer contract.
Right.
That you added. We also have a, an officer in the district now.
Right.
That's an additional savings if you choose to cut that. That's not on here.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so if we went to one at the middle school and one at the high school, what would that, what would the save, what would that be?
I'm sorry.
By 35?
For security?
Thirty-seven thousand. Or, or police officers. I think we're getting the two mixed up.
Right. I'm talking number, Sandy was talking 21.
Number 21.
We're talking 21.
School, school resource.
So, if you cut all, all of them in the, it's 155,000.
Okay, and if we cut, if we had one at the middle school and high school, what's that?
Thirty-seven, five.
We have 75,000.
So, it'd be.
You'd have, we'd have to get the city to agree to do that though.
Right, and that was another thing, we have a contract with the city, so is that something that we can get out of with the city? I mean, is that a contract we can?
They've not hired nobody yet, have they?
I, I understood that they did, but that was just something.
And I've heard a rumor that they were training.
Yeah.
Too, so.
I guess that's another legal thing we need to find out too. Can we find out the legalities of that, of how that would impact us? But, well, so, I guess what I'm hearing then is they, um, so we're on number nine, uh, 21, excuse me, for the, the resource officers. They came as a package deal for three people for $155,000.
Right.
For one police officer, we were paying 80.
Correct.
To have that person in, in our school.
That's correct.
And that particular person was divvied, their responsibilities were divvied up amongst the middle school, the high school and, uh, CHS, our community high school.
And we were lucky if we could find them.
And so, the, um, moving on with the, having this particular, the 155 that would give us three people. One person was going to be solely dedicated to the high school, one person was going to be solely dedicated to the middle school, and then the third individual would rotate amongst our elementary schools. Um, and to just a little bit of background about what the program was going to offer and one of the reasons why we felt that it was a good idea to enter into this particular agreement is, um, well, I should say, one of the things that I remember is that oftentimes our kids, when their interactions with the police, you know, most, a lot of times, that's a negative impact. And so, we wanted to create some positive impacts and some opportunities for mentoring and, and that kind of thing. But also too, to have that visibility of, especially after what happened at Sandy Hook, was to have the visibility of an actual armed police officer available in our schools and accessible to us when we needed to. And so, for me, those were some of the motivating factors on why I thought that this was a good opportunity for our kids. So, now it, it's on the list. And to reduce it, we would be going back to status quo, which would be the one officer in our building for 80,000.
Who was that one? It was a figure last week, figure.
Was the 155.
That was for everybody.
It's the 75, right. So, it's just subtracting that 80,000 out from that 155, yes.
And who will receive what these officers are supposed to do? Because I can tell you what ours done, yeah, and so can everybody out there.
That's a, that's a good question, but I.
Yeah, but yeah, who will receive what they're supposed to be doing?
I would think that the administration, administration and, and possibly.
They're not doing it.
Okay, well, are we going, so we're just going to get rid of.
And I have been very complaining about that and I was told, oh, go to the next person. When administration here is purposely aware of what's going on in that high school. And I've made it very clear to someone and I was told, oh, go to someone else. Go to someone else while you cut my own throat? It doesn't work like that. I've been here too long.
So.
And they know, and who I'm speaking of knows who I'm speaking of.
So, we're going down, back down to our one officer. So, is that what the board wants to do?
I feel we need, you know, we're.
We need one at the middle school.
I think we need one at the middle school. You, from what I hear, there's problems with language and bullying and.
Those two schools in the future need your job.
So, are we going to be quiet, so we can talk? So, okay, we, we need to quiet them so we can talk. This is our meeting.
You're absolutely right. We're trying to hear each other up here, please, just a minute. We can't hear either, so just bear with us. So, are we going to go with the elimination of one of the school resource officers or not?
I guess I just have two questions and I think they were already brought up. Is, is with this, the contract?
The legality, we need to find out.
That we've, we've entered, but then.
Yeah, put that written down.
So, then if, if we're obligated to the, uh, contract, then am I to assume that it would be 80,000 for each officer? Which would, if, so if we're talking about having one at the middle school and one at the high school, then that puts us at 160. And that's kind of why we, we said we would go with the three because to, for two officers is 160, but for three officers, we're getting them for 155. So, that was the deal.
Ooh.
What is the responsibility?
Okay, so.
Other than to look good with the uniform? That's it too. Are they shirking now?
I don't have a, a, so I couldn't even tell you about that, other than safety.
So, is it the board's pleasure then to, to eliminate any of those officers then?
Well, I think what we need to do is get the.
Hey, I just got to look at the contract, yeah.
We need to find out with the contract and what our obligations are.
I, I thought there was a break clause in there, I thought there was.
I think so, but Sherry, once, once we get the information, that's something we can add on later.
Okay. Number 22 and 23. On the list or off the list, guys? Elimination of music and art programs, page 12. Scratch it. Is that the board's pleasure?
You know what, we, um, the majority of you music and art program people are your honor roll.
Honor students. Thank you, Sandy, for.
Because every study this year, there's a correlation between.
Of course, of course.
So, those are items that we want off of the list, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd say number, I mean, 24.
Item 24.
That's pretty much, they, they said we were too slow-staffed as it was. Sherry said we, I mean, we can't, she said we're too far, I mean, we're understaffed anyway. Right, we're already understaffed, so. We're on number 24.